Yep, wait on a minute.
That worked.
All right, everybody ready? I'm going to call to order the six o'clock regular meeting for the Aridale County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, February the twentieth, twenty twenty four. It's my pleasure to see some faces, two nights in a row, from FFA. Thank you all for being here this evening and from our fire departments and various other aspects in the county. And at this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Stroud to give the implication for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work that we do for the citizens of Aridale County.
Our gracious heavenly Father, as we come to you tonight, we ask that you live in our hearts, live in our minds, that, Lord, that we're here to do the business of the people, that we're here to be good stewards, to listen with open ears, open mind, and open heart, to provide good direction, to provide wisdom, and to seek information, and do the best that we humanly can do for five people, for the five, the two hundred thousand that live here. Lord, you asked us to work with us, help us to grow closer and stronger to each other, stronger and closer to the people, that we understand the needs, wants, and desires. We ask you to be with those in harm's way and those that don't know you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager Moll, we're taking a look at our agenda. Would you please go over any adjustments that we have?
Yes, ma'am, we do have two adjustments. The first is the addition under presentation of special recognitions and awards, and that is the FFA proclamation. And the second addition to the agenda is under administrative matters, and it will be item eight point thirteen, and that is the novant letter of support.
I'd like a motion to approve our adjusted agenda.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous. Thank you very much. And now, at this time, we have the honor of the adjusted agenda with the FFA proclamation. Manager Moll, did you have any words you cared to share with us before Nancy Keith gets us started?
We can certainly do that, but where's Nancy? There she is. So this is something that there was an event last evening, and our chair was dazzled and amazed by our FFA group, and so we asked them to come tonight and share their information to the community. We do have our meeting televised, so this is something to talk about their information about projects and experiences within their association. I want to hand it over to Nancy Keith, our Cooperative Extension Director, to see if you have any other words to share.
And she also shared information last night, too, of impacts as our county grows on farmland, too. And I believe you brought those with us, with you this evening, too, did you?
A few little notes.
And that's what we like about Nancy, because she's got good information to share.
Always prepared and ready to go.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Attorney. It is good to be here this evening. It is an honor to be able to bring these young students, FFA members, future leaders of Aridale County, maybe North Carolina, and who knows what all we might have, but they are a very impressive young group of people that we have. At Cooperative Extension, Aridale County, FFA, along with Aridale State's Full Schools, we have tremendous partnerships, partnerships, collaboration, doesn't matter what you say, they both mean working together. So we work together very closely in many events, and to mention some of them, the Wake Up to Ag program that we have for all of the kindergartners in the county, farm safety program that we have in the summer. Also go up to, I've been up to North Aridale High School and taught some pesticide classes, so these students, if they would like to get licensed and have a step ahead in their career and work, they can do that. At the Aridale County Fair, if you've been down there and you notice the exhibits and the exhibit tent that we have, all of the high schools and middle school are represented there with exhibits. Our dairy judging contests, we all participate. There are members who show in beef, sheep, goats, and dairy shows. They also provide plants out of their greenhouses for beautification around our tents and exhibit areas to make the place look really nice. So, you know, they are up and coming, they're the future of Aridale County. And as we're talking about that, of course, agriculture is the number one industry in North Carolina, not only in North Carolina, but right here in Aridale County. North Carolina, it's a one hundred and three billion dollar industry. In Aridale County, agriculture has a six hundred and sixty million dollar economic impact. North Carolina, although we're number one in agriculture, we're the second most threatened state for farmland loss. So models show that in North Carolina, if we keep going the way we're going, by 2040, we'll lose, projected to lose about one point two million acres of farmland. Well, let's bring that home to Aridale County. Something not so proud of, by 2040, Aridale County ranks thirty eighth in the United States for projected loss of farmland, thirty eighth in the United States. So if we continue going the way that we're going, models show that we're projected by 2040 to lose forty-two thousand seven hundred acres. If we go at an increased speed and increased sprawl, we could lose up to sixty thousand acres by 2040. This is 2024, that's not very far off. So, you know, and we look at Aridale County, it's also the sixth fastest growing county in North Carolina. Saying that, and this is where these students have opportunities, we're going to have to produce fifty percent more food by 2030 with all of our increased population in the United States and across the world. We're also going to, by 2050, we'll have to produce seventy percent more food. So think about, we're losing all the farmland, we have to make sure that we take the research that's done at the university, and that's what Cooperative Extension does, takes that research done at the university and extends it out into our community, to our farmers, to our families, to do a more economic efficient job. So whether the students are going into plant science, crop science, soil science, animal science, you know, horticulture, any of that, there are tremendous opportunities with the research that's going to have to be done so that we can feed the rest of the people. You know, one and a half percent, almost one and a half percent are involved in agriculture, and we have to feed the other ninety-eight and a half percent in the United States. So a lot of things that we need to think about, a lot of hard numbers, but that's where we're headed. So we need to make sure that we preserve our farmland. So at this time, I'd like to call on Taylor Knox from the North Aridale FFA, and she will kind of run and call each school up, and as y'all come up, if you'll just state your name and what school you're from, and give your presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor Knox from the North Aridale FFA chapter. I would personally like to thank the Aridale Board of Commissioners for hosting us tonight and for their continued support of FFA students in Aridale County. I speak on behalf of six hundred and thirty members when I say thanks to the hard work of some very dedicated individuals. Our chapter is flourishing. North Aridale High School is home to the largest FFA chapter in the state of North Carolina. This gives us the opportunity to retake in and host many activities. North Aridale FFA, our annual Wake Up to Ag Day at the Aridale County Fairgrounds, where over a thousand and five hundred kindergartners in Aridale County participate over the span of two days to learn about all the aspects of safety in agriculture. While they may not remember everything they learn, in our minds, it's all about planting the seed in them that will eventually grow into the agriculturalist that will eventually be feeding the world. At the ninety-sixth Annual National FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis, we toured agriculture businesses and operations to learn about trending issues. We also attended leadership sessions to develop our career-ready skills. Our chapter president, Dalton Jordan, served as a national delegate where he attended business sessions and made recommendations for the Board of Directors for the National FFA. Another one of our members, Lucas Maynard, was given the opportunity to perform a national talent contest as well as performing at the World's Toughest Rodeo. We also had five of our members get their American FFA degrees. American degree candidates must earn and productively invest ten thousand dollars and two thousand and two hundred and fifty hours in their SAE project. To put that into perspective, less than half of one percent of all FFA members across the nation will get their American FFA degree. We were well represented at the past state FFA convention as well. We had fourteen members from North Aridale get their state degrees. To accomplish this, members need to have been in agriculture classes for two years and worked three hundred hours outside the classroom or earn and invest a thousand dollars on their SAE project. These SAE projects help provide us as students with real world, with real world career experience and also contribute to the local economy through our entrepreneurship and placement activities. This past year, we have participated in thirty-two different career development events, some of which include marketing, farm business management, ag mechanics, forestry, dairy judging, horse judging, cattle working, and precision ag, that's just to name a few. In the inaugural Precision Ag Contest held at the University of Mount Olive, Dalton Jordan placed first in the entire competition. Wyatt Klein, who's one of North Aridale's members, placed first overall in the junior division in state horse judging competition. We're also very involved in our community as well. For example, in the Town of Harmony Annual Christmas Parade, we won first place in the most unique float entry. We are gearing up for competitions coming up in the spring season, and some of us actually just got back from our Federation-level CDEs. Along with all of this, every year, we have the Aridale County Cooperative Extension come out and teach a class on pesticide use in order for students sixteen years of age and older to obtain their private pesticide applicator's license. This year alone, over fifty students have also earned industry credentials with the Briggs and Stratton Small Engine Certifications and the Certified Veterinary Assistant Certification. As previously mentioned, we are always very busy at North Aridale, whether it be competitions, conventions, or banquets. There is always something to get done. North Aridale FFA would like to thank our sponsors, alumni, industry partners, and the county commissioners for their support this year. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you.
Lake Norman FFA, Gianna DiMarco. Good evening. My name is Gianna DiMarco, and I am proudly representing the Lake Norman FFA chapter. At Lake Norman, we have two agriculture teachers that offer agriculture mechanics, horticulture, and animal science classes. This year, we are proud to announce that we are submitting three hundred and fifty-seven student names on our FFA roster. At Lake Norman, we have a greenhouse, welding shop, carpentry shop, and animal facilities that are all used to teach the hands-on components of all of our classes. Our horticulture classes are currently gearing up for a busy spring by filling up our greenhouse with beautiful vegetable and ornamental plants. All of these plants will be available to the public in the spring at our annual plant sale as well as the Aridale County Garden Fair. This past year, we took twelve students to the North Carolina State FFA Convention, where we competed in various career development events, as well as having four students receive their state degree. We finished off the summer with a week at the North Carolina FFA Center for a week of FFA camp. This past fall, we took thirteen students to the National FFA Convention that was held in Indianapolis, where students furthered their knowledge about agriculture and the FFA. We are currently working hard, gearing up for a busy and successful year by preparing to participate in multiple CDEs, attend state convention, all while getting involved in chapter and community events. We are also fortunate to be recipients of a fifteen hundred dollar grant from NC State University. We will be using the funds to start a beekeeping program here on campus and allow students to work hands-on and have a better understanding of pollinators and their importance. We will also be partnering with the Feed and See Food Pantry to plant and maintain their community garden, where a hundred percent of the food will be used in the food pantry and kitchen. This will give our students the opportunity to give back to the community, all while gaining community service hours. We would like to thank the Aridale County Board of Commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to thank all of Aridale County for their continued support of agriculture education in our great county. With the support of the Aridale County community, it is our goal to continue growing the Lake Norman FFA chapter and do our part of bringing awareness and education about the number one industry in our great state to the southern end of Aridale County. Thank you, and happy National FFA Week.
South Aridale FFA, Lillian Murphy. Good evening. My name is Lillian Murphy, and I am the President of the South Aridale High School FFA. I am proudly here, representing our two hundred and eighty-nine South Aridale High School FFA members to give you remarks and updates on our chapter. First, a little overview. At South Aridale, we offer sustainable agriculture, horticulture, animal science, vet assisting, and ag mechanics that are taught by three agriculture teachers. In our classes, students have opportunities to become OSHA, BQA, Beef Quality Assurance, YQCA, Youth Quality Care of Animals, ALONCO, Vet Medical Application Certified, or become a certified vet assistant. Additionally, most of our courses enable students to learn through hands-on opportunities in our barn, dog grooming salon, greenhouse, shop, or aquaponics lab. Our members' learning and opportunities don't stop at the classroom door. Students have opportunities to compete in competitions, attend conferences, industry tours, internships, and much more. I will briefly share about a few of those accomplishments that occurred outside the classroom, thanks to FFA. I'll start with Career Development Event and Leadership Development Event team highlights this past year. We are in second place in North Carolina for Ag Issues Forum Career Development Event, second place in North Carolina for Agroscience Fair Environmental Systems, first place in Creed Speaking for the Northwest Region, first highest individual in floriculture for the Northwest Region, second place in land judging for the Northwest Region, and fourth place in livestock judging Senior Division for the Northwest Region. We are looking forward to our upcoming CDEs and LDEs at Regional Rally in April. Yesterday, at the Lookout Shoals Federation, our job interview, prepared public speaking, and parliamentary procedure teams advanced. Thirteen of our members attended the National FFA Convention in November in Indianapolis. We were able to take numerous industry tours and attend leadership development workshops. Two of our members, Hannah Lofton and Abby Mullins, received their American degree, the highest degree that can be bestowed upon an FFA member. Two of our students participated in the NC State Fair Youth Market Turkey Show. Both contestants tied for third place at the NC State Fair with birds weighing twenty-five pounds. The opportunity FFA provides don't stop there. As part of the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve", we strive to instill in our members to give back to the community. Some of those highlights this past year include hosting a mini camp series for fourth to eighth graders over the summer to expose them to career opportunities in agriculture. We plan to host another series this upcoming year in July. Other events we hosted included Breakfast with a Leader in December, a canned food drive over the holidays, working with Samaritan's Purse to provide disaster relief, and partnering with the South Aridale High School Arts Department to host three craft fairs, the Fall Craft Event, Holiday Bazaar, and Spring Fling for local businesses to sell products. This alone enabled us to serve over ninety-five small businesses and craft vendors in Aridale and surrounding counties. In twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, we had a goal to have a hundred percent of our students completing an SAE, Supervised Agriculture Experience Project. I am proud to say that so far, our students have logged over fifty-nine hundred hours and generated an economic impact of seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Other highlights of our program include adding an apiator to our campus, thanks to a grant from Farm Bureau North Carolina Ag in the classroom that Mr. Holland received. Additionally, our program recently submitted a proposal for consideration of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four CTE grants for agriculture, those part of the North Carolina General Assembly's latest budget. If received, this grant will provide our program with eighty-five thousand dollars for needed upgrades to our barn and greenhouse. As you can tell, our program is busy. Agriculture education exists in all parts of our county, including the parts that are growing fast, turning farms into houses and developments. I want to end my remarks tonight by saying thank you for your continued support of agriculture education in Aridale State's Full Schools. Many of our students at South Aridale are three to four generations removed from production agriculture. Without our program, they would not be exposed to North Carolina's largest economic engine, agriculture, and the endless career opportunities it has. Again, thank you for the invitation tonight to speak about why FFA is important to the future of Aridale County.
Statesville FFA, Denitria Smitherman. Good evening. My name is Denitria Smitherman, Treasurer of Statesville High School FFA Chapter. Thank you for joining us in this celebration as we honor the individuals who have supported our Aridale County FFA chapters. Our chapters have grown in many areas, including our classes, members, and opportunities. We are beyond grateful for our experiences this year so far. Our chapter held its annual mom sale this past fall on National Mental Health Day, where we handed out flyers to raise awareness of positive impact moms and horticulture plants have on your mental health to each customer. We love showing our advocacy for agriculture mixed with the events we host. Our members attended the NC State Fair for FFA Day, toured Metrolinea Greenhouse, as we, as well as NC Farms Greenhouse. We also attended the FFA National Convention and Expo last fall, where six of our members traveled to Indianapolis. Some of the highlights from this trip were the World's Toughest Rodeo, Farm Oak, Fair Oaks Farms, and Church Hills Downs. Our chapter has also set up booths at Westward Farm to advocate for the two hundred apple growers in North Carolina that produce about four million bristles of apples each year. Recently, we toured the Jerry Equine Unit at NC State University and participated in horse judging training sessions, where we learned more about how we can excel as competitors in upcoming horse competitions. We are excited about what's to come this year through competitions, industry tours, and leadership events enhancing the future of our FFA programs. On behalf of current and former FFA members of Statesville High School, we want to express our sincere gratitude to each and every one of you for your continued support of our FFA chapter. We appreciate your time, thank you. West Aridale FFA, Lauren Alford.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Alford, I'm proudly representing the FFA chapter, and normally I would love to come and shake all of your hands, but I don't know if I'm allowed to do that.
You can make that happen before the night's over.
Okay. Well, I'm delighted to provide you all with an overview of our FFA chapter's recent accomplishments and upcoming events. So currently, we have about two hundred members with two teachers who teach animal science, horticulture, and agricultural mechanics. We also have a student teacher who is actually with us today, recording me, this semester from the University of Mount Olive. Starting in April of twenty twenty-three, Lazy Five Ranch graciously donated us five views and two weathers for our students to begin a show team. During that year, continuing to this school year, we showed at local shows consisting of the Aridale County Fair, Hickory Fair, State Fair, and the NC Mountain State Fair, as well as others. During that same month, we had been told that the Northwest, at the Northwest Regional Rally, that West Aridale would have two students serving as regional officers, Mr. Hunter Martin and myself. This year, we take in students to compete in the following events: Regional Livestock Judging, Dairy Evaluation, and the Cattle Working Competition. While yesterday, we had students competing in job interview, extemporaneous speaking, prepared public speaking, tool ID, and creed speaking. Of creed speaking, prepared public speaking, and extemporaneous speaking, we had three students advance to our regionals. During this twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, we had the pleasure of taking an amazing group of students to National Convention in Indiana. We rode the bus with Surrey Central and Bandys High School, and during the same week, I had the great opportunity to serve as a national delegate for North Carolina. I had the, I worked to benefit our community on a national level. After being home from National Convention, we coordinated with a local elementary school to sponsor a family for Christmas. Students brought their families, their and their little ones' gifts, as well as sought help from businesses to provide meal and business gift cards so that everyone could experience the Christmas joy. Additionally, during this week, National FFA Week, we are continuing the West Aridale tradition of a mental health petting zoo consisting of several on-campus animals. Our mental health petting zoo provides students and staff with a unique opportunity to distress and relax through interaction with therapeutic animals. The chapter will be ensuring that our teachers and staff are well-fed through a taco bar to show our appreciation for their dedication to our students, and without them, we wouldn't be here today. Today, for National FFA Week, we had the amazing ability to have our eighth graders from West Aridale Middle School come tour our program with a provided lunch, thank you to the sponsorship of Purdue. We have many fun games, as well as seeing our on-campus animals such as pigs, goats, chickens, rabbits, and of course, our beloved squeaker, the guinea pig. Everyone loves him. As we go throughout the West, the rest of twenty twenty-four, we look forward to taking students to UMO Ag Fest, Mega, State Convention, and hosting a fundraiser to help benefit our chapter. Just a few weeks before we close out the school year, we will hold our chapter banquet at Westward Farms. We will honor all of our students' accomplishments, accomplishments, and sending off our seniors who we will miss dearly. Thank you all for having the FFA members here tonight to show you the future of agriculture. I hope you all have a great night and a safe drive home.
North Aridale Middle School FFA, Elizabeth Sanner.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Sanner, President of the North Aridale Middle School FFA Chapter, and I would like to highlight a few of our chapter's accomplishments tonight. Our chapter just completed this year's roster with a total of four hundred and seventy-seven members. Each month, we hosted an after-school FFA meeting, which officers plan service projects and leadership activities. In September, we hosted over a hundred people at our first parent picnic to inform students and parents the opportunity Middle School FFA has. We have participated in career development events, including tractor driving, livestock evaluation, and currently have students working hard to prepare for poultry judging, which is tomorrow, held in Raleigh. This past spring, our Envirothon team won first place in the District FFA event and advanced to compete at the State Envirothon in Burlington. Aridale County Soil and Water sponsored our state team's participation. We are currently training two teams to participate in the District Eight competition, which will be held in Salisbury this March. Our dairy judging team earned second place middle school in the state, and a team of seventh-grade ag students competed in the Aridale County STEM Contest in April and won second place in the district. This year, we will participate in the Middle School Rally in March on the campus of North Carolina ANT State University in Greensboro. We will have, we will have teams preparing in biotechnology, prepared public speaking, and quiz bowl. Our ag department won a one thousand Our ag department won a one-thousand-dollar STEM grant from Deuxon Bobcat for the second year in a row. These funds are being used to build hydrophonic systems inside our classrooms that was designed by our sixth-grade ag classes. In partnership with the Iredale County Farm Bureau and the South Line Mobile Dairy Classroom, we hosted Dairy Day at Union Grove Elementary School in June. Our students shared agriculture classes promoted to the fifth graders, who while the whole school learned from the mobile dairy classroom. Our FFA officers planned a fall service project to support our community with shoebox collections. At our November meeting, students packed thirty-four shoeboxes and delivered them to Sammoa's Purse. This project helps students not only understand their role in making a difference in our community, but in the world when working together. We have been raising funds to cover our FFA membership dues with our chapter T-shirt sales. Thank you to a generous donation, our middle school students now have access to our chapter FFA closet. It is equipped with ten sets of official dress, which allow members to check out official dress for contests and events. Recently, thirty-three students received their hunter safety certification through our seventh-grade natural resource classes. Thank you for allowing us to share our program's accomplishments. I hope that you share our vision for the future of agriculture in Iredale County and see that this industry continues to not only help our economy, but also feeds the world. We look forward to growing in the future of agriculture at North Iredale Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank each and every one of you for taking time, sharing information, and if my math is correct, just for this school year alone, you've impacted directly a thousand, over a thousand students throughout Iredale County. FFA program is incredible. Teachers, would you stand up for me so we can see who your teachers are with FFA, please, throughout the county?
Thank you very much. You keep impacting lives in ways that no other program can. My kids went through it, made a direct impact on their lives, and took priceless memories, experiences, and education. And listening to each one of you talk about the program, it can touch your life no matter what direction you go. I hope that it stays in agriculture. Judging by what Nancy Keith has shared with us, you're going to be doing a lot more with a lot less, and that's concerning for a lot of us. I'm sure your teachers have seen changes over time as well. And at this time, I'd like to invite the rest of the board to share some comments as well, before I read the proclamation. Commissioner Brown?
I get to be first. You noticed my daughter hid behind the podium, so she couldn't see me.
Would you like to say any words to your daughter?
I think she should stand up so everybody can see. You know, you're scared?
I'm scared.
She's shy like me.
She just wants, she doesn't want any extra attention. She's just there as part of the team, you said, Pastor.
Yeah, I know. She's shy. But at least she took her luck except for mom. But, you know, growing up on a farm, I enjoy farming. I promote farming, and, you know, I talk to a lot of people different places, and, and, you know, it's crazy how, I hate to say dumb, but some people just, just don't get it, because eggs and meat do not come from Walmart. You know, people need to understand that. You know, I've heard so many people, especially in my business, because in the zoo business, they think we're completely different. We still, we're still agriculture. But, you know, we produce things, and Walmart doesn't produce it. It just doesn't happen. And, you know, I heard a thing on the radio today, and some of y'all probably heard it, where they were talking about, a lady called, about deer, and she was talking about, and this is, this is how crazy some people are, but she said, "We need to move all the, you know, watch out for deer signs to the school crossings, because that way people drive slow through there." But it's the same thing as, as Walmart. People, they just don't have a clue how the world works. And Nancy, you was talking about going down, when I was in FFA in nineteen seventy-six, probably for most everybody he was born, but it was, you know, it was a lot different then. We had tons and tons of people, and young ladies, it's awesome to see y'all, because when I went to school, we had one lady in our class, the rest of it was guys, and they weren't serious. They were there just to cut up. From what I've seen from all y'all young ladies, you're serious about this. My daughter finally got serious about it. It took forever for me to get her to, you know, she didn't even want to go to school. She hated school. Now she loves school, and I said, "Can you help me at the farm?" Nope. I'm got, I got FFA, I got this, I got this, and so I can't get her to do it, but we appreciate what you're doing.
Drove yourself, though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're good then.
But, you know, I bought her a car for her sixteenth birthday, and she wanted a truck. Had to have a truck. So, so now she got that big four-wheel-drive Ford, but, but she's going to kill me later.
Is this going to be the last meeting you ever come to to watch your dad? Okay.
But I do, I appreciate all y'all. I tell you, y'all are great. Keep doing what you're doing.
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank you, to thank you, each of you, and your programs. You know, agriculture is the number-one thing. Last night, I was planning to come to the event, and I wish I would have had the agriculture, the mechanical portion. I had a piece of equipment fail at the farm yesterday. I just raised a few black Angus and hay and, and had something happen and wasn't able to attend. So I wished I would have had that class. Maybe I could have got done a little faster and with a few less.
Sorry.
Oh, I'll, I'll be with you in a minute. But I want, I want to thank each of you and your programs, everything you do, and how important agriculture here is in, in North Carolina and especially Iredale County. So kudos to you and the, and the great job that you're doing.
Amen.
And would you like me to take care of your light work for you, ma'am?
Oh, of course.
Oh, no, it's not a, it won't be a hand slap tonight. I'll, I'll take care of him for you in just a little bit. So, but thank y'all very much.
And with that, we'll turn it down here to this side of the dais here.
I'll just echo what they said. I want to thank Nancy and her staff, for, they do a great job. You know, I checked with Nancy last week for one of our forums on the impact, and we'd be surprised of how many people in, in Iredale County and North Carolina don't realize those are our number-one industries. But I just want to thank Nancy and our ag teachers, as Melissa identified, the parents above all. I know it's a lot of work to take kids to these events and participation in those, just like other kids are participating in sports, but great asset to our county. I want to thank our schools for these programs. How much do you, do you guys pay for memberships? Heard somebody mention dues.
North Iredale, they pay it for us.
They pay for it. Okay, I got you. I wanted to make sure that y'all weren't having to pay that yourself. But great job. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for the invite last night. I was there last night. I was actually a member of the FFA at North Iredale High School, graduated in nineteen ninety-two. So when you get to graduate and you get to get out, then you can get into office and you can work with Scotty and Brad and Jean. I'll be good. And Scotty, you need to remember, she might be the one that decides where you go at a certain point of your life, so you don't want to.
Person home.
Yeah, yeah. But really do appreciate your dedication, appreciate the instructors, the teachers, the supporters. Last night's event wasn't cheap, so they had their folks that paid for the meal, they had their sponsors, the door prizes and everything, so the community really steps up, so, and that's, has, speaks volume for the county that we live.
Amen.
Very proud of each and every one of you. And with that, I would like to read National FFA Week Proclamation. We'll read this into the record. Whereas FFA and agriculture education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and for the future of food, fiber, and natural resources systems, and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agricultural education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, and whereas the FFA motto is, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve," gives direction and purpose to those students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education, and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Therefore, we, the Iredale County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate the week of February seventeenth through twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, as National FFA Week, adopted this the twentieth day of February, twenty-twenty-four. And at this time, I would like each of you that represented your school to please come up front here, and I would like to present you with the proclamation. You can just come right through that front entrance there. And then we're going to stay for a picture. I'm sorry. Oh, I do need a motion. See, y'all, we had the, as you have learning through parliamentary procedure, I need a motion to approve the proclamation.
Motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Were you unanimous? Thank you, Manager Moll. She keeps me straight. So everyone needs a, an assistant to keep everything up and running. And if you'll turn and face the people for me, and I'll come down. There you go. Congratulations. Congratulations. Gentlemen, will y'all please stand up behind me? And we'll get down right here for a picture.
Can we get everybody in the picture from the FFA, just other kids?
We certainly can.
Come on up, guys. You need to be part of this, too. Teachers, too, please.
Gracie, come on up here.
Teachers, y'all can stand behind the table if you would. No, yeah, line up there, be great.
Teachers, up there.
All right, teachers, you love this, yeah, look at what they're looking, they're excited there.
If they're going to make us, they're going to make us.
That's right, because stand behind, if y'all step behind, that'd be perfect.
I'm short, I'm lining up.
Stand up.
Why don't you stand back here?
Toes, two toes.
All right.
Get in the window, because I definitely won't be able to be seen.
Right here. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Gracie, and if I heard correctly, they, they, was it third place for a thirty-pound turkey? Next year, you could enter about a hundred-and-eighty-pound turkey, probably get first place.
I hope I get to a hundred-and-eighty.
If you, if you, as students, if y'all are welcome to stay, but we totally understand with your school schedule, if you need to head toward the house, we understand, but you are more than welcome to stay, it's up to y'all's schedule. But we appreciate you doing two nights in a row of sharing your information. Manager Moll, we'll continue down our agenda. We do not have any appointments before the board this evening and no public hearings. But we'll take us to administrative matters. If you would like, go ahead and summarize those, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. The following items were reviewed at our four o'clock meeting and agreed by the board to place on the consent agenda. There was a request from Emergency Communications to approve a service-level agreement with the city of Statesville and town of Mooresville for Emergency Communications Secondary Public Safety Answering Point Service with Iredale County. A request from Emergency Medical Services for approval of Budget Amendment Number Thirty to accept a Statesville ABC grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. A request from Emergency Medical Services for approval of Budget Amendment, Budget Amendment Number Thirty-two to amend the American Rescue Plan Act grant project ordinance and to award the cardiac monitor defibrillator bid to Zoll Medical. A request from the town of Mooresville for approval of a resolution to transfer a right for twenty-seventy land in the Back Creek-Cottle Creek Public Water Supply watershed, and this was one hundred and sixty-seven-point-eight-five acres to finish Mooresville Business Park East. A request from the library for approval to apply for a State Library of North Carolina Library Service and Technology Act grant in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred dollars to provide privacy pods. These have a glass front where individuals can have privacy if they're participating, for example, like virtual job interviews and things of that nature. And also, this does require a ten percent match. A request from the library for approval of Budget Amendment Number Thirty-one to accept a grant from the North Carolina Humanities in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars to host a Smithsonian traveling exhibit and amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We were selected as one of six libraries in the state of North Carolina to, to host this, this exhibit. There was a request from the Finance Department for approval of an eighteen-month advertisement contract with Thrive for printed production for department's contact information in the Yellow Pages. A request from the Finance Department for approval of a resolution authorizing sale of personal property by public auction, and this is a nineteen ninety-eight cat dozer. A request from the Finance Department for approval of an audit contract with Martin Starrns Associate CPA for fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, the amount of ninety thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars plus three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per compliance program that exceeds two. We get two in that contract price. A request from the Finance Department for approval of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five spending plan for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council in the amount, in the amount of four hundred and five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. A request from the Economic Development Commission for a letter of support for the TPA Group's application to have two sites added to the North Carolina Certified Sites Program. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the January two thousand twenty-four refunds and releases, and finally, approval of a letter of support for Novant Health's acquisition of Lake Norman Medical Center and Davis Regional Medical Center.
Thank you, Manager Moll, for that summarization. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you unanimous? Thank you very much. We do not have any announcements or vacancies, but we do have two appointments. If you'll take a look in your packet on those. Would you like to go over those appointments, please?
Absolutely. The first appointment is for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and Ms. Pam Navy has volunteered to serve. This is a commissioner appointment, and it was created by a vacancy.
Let's go ahead and, do I have a motion to approve or nominate the, or approve the appointment?
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Pam Navy to JCPC.
Thank you. Commissioner Stroud, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Unanimous on that one?
Thank you. The next one is the Recreation Advisory Board. We have one appointment, and that's Leonard Campbell, and he has volunteered to serve for the first time.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make that motion, and before I do that, I want to say that this is the first person that I've had more people to reach out to me about this person, saying how great he was. So, and I sit on that board, and I can't wait to get him on there, and it's, it's been unbelievable, the outreach that I've gotten. I'd like to approve Leonard Douglas Campbell for Recreation Advisory Board.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous on that one. And again, I appreciate the willingness of those who are, step up to serve on boards and commissions, and if you are interested, there always seems to be an opportunity, please look on our website for opportunities to serve. And with that, takes us to any unfinished business, which I don't believe we have any this evening. We'll go to the public comment period. And I will read my official notes here. The Board conducts a public comment period at its second regular meeting of each month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county government. Each speaker that is signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair, and your names appear on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole. Responses by the Board are at their discretion, but the public comment period is not intended to be a question-and-answer period, but rather a time for the Board to hear from the public and take such matters under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any matters which concern candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the person addressing the Board. Citizens should not discuss any matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to the matters regarding personnel or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with the clerk to the Board. And with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. And with the sign-in sheet, we have Richard Heinrich. Did I say that correctly? If you'll please approach, and if you'll state your name and address for the record, please. And then you'll have three minutes. Unless you have other ones that want to share information as well, we'll need to add them to the list, but I have you as the one and only this evening.
All right. My name is Richard Heinrich. Address is five-six-six Barber Loop in Mooresville. And I, I serve as the Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Lake Norman Fire and Rescue Department. I'm here to speak today on behalf of the Southern Iredale County Fire Departments of Lake Norman, Mount Warren, Shepherds, and South Iredale. The Board of Directors and Chief Officers of our departments have become increasingly frustrated with the annual allocation of funding of our departments. We don't feel that the current funding formula being utilized fully takes into consideration the rapid growth of our communities, the high cost providing the level of service that the members of our communities expect and that they deserve. Our boards have carried a heavy load on our shoulders, being faced with the rising costs associated with staffing, our departments at the proper levels, which have far outpaced the funding increases. The property revaluations in twenty- The property revaluations in 2023 generated a significant increase in tax revenue, much of that increase coming from our fire districts. We're extremely disappointed that a disproportional share of the additional revenue was allocated to our departments. We expect that our communities will continue to grow, which will translate into higher call volumes and the need for additional staffing for coverage. This growth is something we should be planning for now, rather than continuing to deal with the financial struggles of past growth and reducing service with the recent changes to the EMS medical call protocols. Each of the 19 county fire departments included in the funding process is different. Perhaps funding of each department should be considered individually, based on a detailed budget, an operating plan, and a profile of each protection area. Using a generalized approach such as a formula or socializing an equal increase across a group of departments is not likely to correctly match funding with the operational needs for anybody. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only name I have signed up. Is anyone else wanting to speak this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment period. And then I will look to our commissioners for an update this evening. Comments or updates, gentlemen? No comments or updates?
I'll just say, there's a lot of representatives here from the South community departments and, and board members, and we appreciate what you do. We've met with you guys recently. We're looking at some pilot programs and other things. But we do appreciate all that you do. And going into budget session, we're looking at a lot of different things, and I think we're going to have to consider some potential changes to some of the stuff. But just wanted to say thank you as one of the board members that deal with you guys on a regular basis. A lot of professional people, and we appreciate your involvement in the fire departments in your communities.
Thank you, Commissioner Halt. Did you want to go ahead?
Yes, ma'am. I, I would like to go back to our letter of support for Novant, basically wanting to purchase Davis Regional and Lake Norman Regional. And I've sat here and I've thought about this. This is very critical to our county. This is one of the most critical things that you could think of when you start looking at hospital care. And to think that our big government, is what I kind of refer to it, is more worried about this than the things that really matter to us as a population is sad. It really is. We allow for a border that is just overran, basically, and we get no attention to that, but we get attention to this of a, of a private sale of a hospital to another hospital company, basically, hospital buying a hospital. And it's sad that we do that. It's sad that our government is more focused on that than what they should be. And, you know, I understand, you know, certain things, they have to make sure that's in place. But, you know, they mess around this too much, and they shut Lake Norman down. We're going to have a problem.
Critical.
And a big, big problem in this county. You know, the, the transition of Davis, and it says it in our letter here, that, that was typed up and that we signed off on tonight, that, you know, Davis, we didn't really know this was coming. And Davis not having emergency care there, having ER, having bed space there for hospital care, that's very critical, very, very critical. So I hope that maybe somebody will wake up, and we really need the community support behind this, every single person in this entire county. And this is not only our county, this affects people that are border our county that don't have hospitals. So this is very, very critical. It's very, very critical. But it's sad that our, our, our big government's more worried about stuff like this than what they need to be. So that's all I've got.
You know, and that proves a point of, a lot of times, we don't notice things until it's too late, if you will, citizens.
Too reactive.
Right, on that one, too. So I appreciate our attorney as well helping us create the letter of support, and it aligns with the importance of taking care of our citizens. You in the emergency field understand totally. It's your daily world. You see it all the time. And when we see the fact that our citizens don't have the care that they need at a given moment, shines a light on things. So it's critical, that one. Also, just to circle back around a few other things we've had going on in the community. We are such an interesting county. When you go from the southern end where the population, you're seeing that as well, to all the way up to where there is a house built in almost essentially the side of a mountain in Love Valley. Spent some time in Love Valley with the mayor, Tim Meadows, last Friday, riding the roads. They're making some improvements. The mail lady can actually get to the mailboxes this time, because that was a big issue when the roads were washed out and various things. So making a lot of road improvements there. They're dedicating a lot of time and attention to the residents. Mayor's done a lot of good things, and he extends his appreciation for the Board, willing to be there for support if need be, but they're moving forward with the funds at, from a federal level for some of the sewer improvements on that one. There was an EDC investor meeting, a breakfast. So we go from small-town Love Valley to Mooresville, Statesville, Troutman, Growth, and discussion of what's going on with there. So we had an opportunity to meet with those entities. Then on one, I believe it was, my days are blurring together, Thursday evening last week, we had the Greater Statesville Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting with the Sage Awards. And Commissioner Halt, remind me what the Sage Award is. You saw it written on there for me.
Statesville Area Growth and Excellence Award.
Thank you. I didn't remember the acronym on that one. But recognizing Iredell County as a part of the fusion, meaning we work together as a team with Iredell-Statesville Schools, Mooresville Grade at School District, Mitchell Community College, the municipalities for Iredell Ready. So if you are looking for a change in a career, check out the Iredell Ready's website. It is not just for high school students. It's, it is directed at anyone who is wanting to make a change in their career path. Or, you know, if you retired and you want a little bit of a part-time gig, there's ways to take a look at that opportunity as well. So, and then, of course, a recap from the FFA dinner we had this evening in person. So I can't think of better county, a better place to live. Never a dull moment. And with that, I'll just ask if anyone has anything else they want to add?
I failed to mention one other thing. You know, other, when we go into our budget sessions in March, I'd like for us to, you know, looking at all of our emergency services and things, we need to look at that. But also, talking to Nancy a week or two ago, and the things she mentioned tonight, with that being the leading industry in our county and the state, we need to look at ways to incentivize preservation of farmland. You know, when we hear, people are, people are yelling at their rooftops that farms are going away, but expectations for more production is going up. So we, as a county and a leading industry in that, we need to look at, you know, with Lisa and Beth, work with Nancy and others statewide, too, to look at things we could either advocate for on the state level and do ourselves to somehow incentivize, you know, the farmland preservation. I think that's important for us to, to concentrate on and look at deep, very deep.
Because once it's gone, it's gone. You can't go backwards.
Once it's gone, it's gone. I mean, our 2045 plan tried to identify these corridors, but I think we need to look at other ways that we can help the farmers preserve that land and, and keep it in that use. Protect it, because once it's gone and sold, it's gone and sold.
Thank you. One last thing. If you sit there and look, and I can't find my notes, but I'll have to say, if I could sit here and think of 60 things to say, 60 things to say.
I could think of one.
Can you think of one?
Think of one.
What, what would that be, Commissioner Brown?
That would be a happy birthday.
To who would that be, the birthday for?
To the big and ugly one sitting here.
I believe that, and he started a tradition, though, and I.
He did start this.
Is that the best adjectives you can come up with for the birthday boy?
It was short notice. I did see it on Facebook, Dan. I meant to get to it, but I was swamped today, so.
You know, in some, in some parts of the world, they consider 60. I'm going to be nice here. You're waiting for this, right?
Yes.
It is the big.
Yes, yes, I'm waiting.
It is the end of one error, but yet the beginning of another. Do you feel like you've wrapped up one error and beginning your other? Because I can't say you're middle-aged anymore, unless you're planning to live to 120.
He's in overtime.
Over.
I'm enjoying each day as they come.
Absolutely. And I have to say that last year, we recognized, I don't believe anybody was missed on our birthdays last year, and.
I think he's the last one.
A full circle around. Jean had one recently, but.
Actually, we went full circle and missed it last year. That's true. We did. We did.
Really?
Yes, we did.
Maybe that was intentional. So we wanted to make a big deal this year.
For the 60.
Yes, it is. So with that.
I can tell you, all this, whatever it is, the cake was worth it.
The cake was worth it. And I have to say, though, there were times when, and Commissioner Stroud, he brings a, an element of enthusiasm and teamwork to, to our board, which is critical. We have to make tough decisions together. It's best that we can celebrate together, too. Even though there's been a few little comments that were made, it is not, we cannot ignore the fact that we are a team and we have celebrations like birthdays. So, are you singing?
We're going to do it, yes.
Are we going to do it?
We're going to do it. I think you should have done it in, in one of the suits, but.
Well, that's.
That would have been.
That would have been something. We will save that for years from now. Years.
Are we ready?
I think so.
Happy birthday to.
Oh, you got to sing for yourself. You're the one with the best voice. Ah, then I'll have to recite it.
I'm going to be here all night.
Y'all have to leave. Y'all sing, will y'all sing with us just to get us through?
I don't blame you. I would, too.
Please help us.
All right, here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, big and ugly. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See what I'm saying about teamwork?
Oh.
On that one. All right. We made it through Commissioner comments and updates. Do we have any new business? Okay. County Managers' Report, please. Bring us back home.
I don't even know how to follow that. So just a few things. Early voting started on Thursday, on the 15th. And just a reminder that you do have to have a voter ID. If you do not have one, the Board of Elections will provide you one. So contact them, and they can help you get that. The spring, there is a spring break camp that our Recreation Department is holding, and that camp will be April the 1st through the 5th, from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. for ages 5 to 10. So the registration for that camp begins on March 1st. So if you have a child that's looking for an activity during the spring break, take a look at that opportunity, and you can register. It starts on March the 1st. Our Parks and Rec Department also has various programs each month. They have STEM programs, and they also have agriculture programs, which is very fitting with our FFA, and both of those are in conjunction with our Cooperative Extension Office. So I thought that was very fitting to announce that. You can check the website for, for the dates of those programs, and it's for children ages kindergarten to fifth grade. And, again, those are listed on our website with our Iredell County Parks and Rec Department. Just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of things and decisions that this Board made that, that I really think will have a lasting impact on our community and service delivery to the citizens that happened at our winter retreat that we had on the 14th. Two of those things, and, and I don't think it's any mystery that with the growth that we're experiencing in the county and with our fire service that's here, they certainly know EMS is, is running constantly, and it's, it's been an uphill battle. We have some vacancies in that department that we're working to fill. We're one of few agencies in the state that is an all-paramedic agency, and we have that ALS designation. But we don't have to be all paramedics to keep that ALS designation. And one of the things that we're looking to do, and the Board gave us approval to start, is the Third Man Program, where we can hire EMTs to ride second on that ambulance. We have a paramedic and partner them with an EMT, so that will help us fill some of those vacancies. It doesn't compromise the service that's being provided. It's still an ALS service. But it does help us with our vacancies and sickness, and, and allows our employees to actually take a vacation day. So by adding those positions, there's, there's actually money that can be saved as well. And it allows our employees, those that are picking up those overtime shifts, it gives them an opportunity to actually have some time offs, which is, that is great, too. So thank you to the Board, being willing to listen to some creative options and ideas of how to help get fully staffed in that service. I mean, that speaks volumes to the Board. You, you said this is important. We need to get this, get this resolved, and tell us what it will take, and give us every option that's available. So we did that, and the Board was, was very kind in saying, you know what? That's a good solution. Let's implement that, and we can actually do it and save money. So thank you for that. The other is the addition of, or expanding our Community Paramedics and, and Community Response Program. So that is one, and Mountmore Fire Department has graciously allowed us to kind of let their fire department be the home for this, this new individual that would be in a quick-response vehicle. That's been a great program, and we're expanding that, and we appreciate the Board working with us to, to be able to allow us to do that as well. So those are two things that came out of the retreat. And, you know, there's so many different things that the Board discusses, and options and ideas, and challenges. But never once does the Board say, no, we don't want to hear anything that's outside of the box. Let's just stick with what we know. That's tried and true. We've done for years and years. This Board challenges us and says, give us every option you have, and let's talk about it. Let's vet it, and let's find what works best for this county. So I appreciate that.
All right. Anything further?
No, ma'am. That's all.
All right. Well, with that, we did have a closed session with Attorney Client, Attorney Client, Economic Development, and Property Acquisition, but we had no action from that. And at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Were you adjourned?